I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Christensen. Amon.
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Docan?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
DeBlick?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, do we?
Mr. Mayor, I would, um...
I'm sorry?
Have one item under old, I think probably old business.
Do I hear motion to approve the agenda, the consent items?
So will.
I have one item I'd like to have removed, if I may. Uh, the zoning appeal board, excuse me, number F. The zoning appeals board, Shirley Carter, Shirley Carter, uh, has decided that she, uh, would like something else other than the appeals board.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to talk about something under F after we've approved this.
Okay.
So we'll pull F.
Okay. So do I hear motion to approve everything but F?
Also.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to approve all the consent items with the exception of F, and, uh, like I say, I am pulling Shirley Carter because of, uh, her wanting to be removed from that. Nelsonman?
Um, I think we need to vote first, and then, and then we'll come back to this.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to talk about one of your appointments to the Economic Development Board, Linda Catcher. I see in the paper that she is running for, uh, office, um, it's for the Minnesota House of Representatives, and I don't think it's appropriate that we have candidates being put on our board, so I would, I would not be in favor of this, whether you want to maybe withdraw that or just go ahead and vote on it, but I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay. Um, I'd like to ask for that, if I may. Uh, we also have, uh, former Senator Joe Gimsey on the Wilmer Municipal Board who was appointed, and we have no response to that, we had no response to that.
I don't believe he was in office when he was appointed.
No, and neither is, uh...
But she's, she's running. It just doesn't seem right to me, that's all.
Thank you. I will, I'll go ahead. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would ask our city attorney if he has, uh, an opinion on this, and if he does, if he would please, uh, express it.
I haven't looked at this issue specifically, Councilmember Docan. I'm not aware of any legal prohibition to appointing someone who's running for a different office to this board, uh, but, like I said, I haven't specifically looked into that.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman, did you have a question?
Um, well, I just had a question on Shirley Carter, if you have, uh, but we're...
Councilmember Johnson?
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Johnson?
I would just have a comment that, uh, I understand Councilmember Anderson's concerns, but in the interest of consistency, uh, my recollection is former Councilmember Reese, while a member of this council filed and ran for, uh, county commissioner, which he was eventually elected to, so I'm questioning why this would be any more, I mean, I don't have a, any real interest, but I, uh, it just, from consistency standpoint, I don't see where one's okay and the other isn't.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I see a difference. Councilmember Reese was a member of the city council, um, and he, he filed to run for, for the county commissioners. Here we have an individual, and, and it's nothing about the individual, it's about the situation that we're in. It just does not seem appropriate to appoint, uh, a person who is running for office like that to, to one of our boards and commissions. It just, it just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem right, doesn't, it just doesn't sit right with me.
Well, she doesn't have, I don't think that lady, from what I read in the paper, has secured a nomination for that position yet.
No, but she has indicated that she's running, and she, and there's going to be precinct caucuses and all of that sort of thing.
And if she isn't successful, I mean, or let's assume that she was appointed to a board or commission for the city, if she was successful, um, in her bid for the other office, she could then resign, just as Mr. Reese did.
She could. I think it, I think it just puts her in an awkward position.
Would you like to, excuse me, would you like to vote on this? Is that what we do? I'm not sure.
We, uh, currently we don't have a motion on the table, but, uh, you know, I think, um, at one point in time, I know when these appointments would come before the council, that they would be, um, introduced at one meeting and then, um, acted on at the next, so, uh, we've kind of gotten away from that.
I would ask our city attorney what, uh, what the best way to resolve this would be. I have no intentions of, of pulling Linda Catcher... Okay. Uh, from the mayoral appointment.
Mr. Mayor, this is really a matter for the council to determine. There's no legal reason you need to handle it one way or another. You can handle it by taking a motion and voting on the nomination today. You can essentially table it and come back at the next meeting with the same situation you have tonight. It's really a matter for the council to decide.
What does the council wish to do? I'm sorry, go ahead, councilman.
If we did choose to table it, I believe the caucus is tomorrow night, we would know, um, at the next meeting whether she'll, she is actually, um, a candidate or not at that point in time, whether she's supported with that, and make a motion to table her nomination.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to table the nomination of Linda Catcher as a, uh, mayoral appointment. Uh, councilman?
Well, just a comment, uh, some people might interpret, I guess this is dealing with politics, and I hate using the word politicians, I'd rather call us public servants, but in this case, anybody that votes for or against it could be branded one party or another, and I just want to let it know I'm independent. So, do matter who makes the motion or seconded. This is politics right here at its finest, folks, and it shouldn't be that way with these mayors' appointments. We just have, we should just have a good mix of people that care about our community. What party affiliation doesn't make any difference, and I don't know Linda, uh, but she, she seems to have as many qualifications as other people, and, uh, it's good to have a mix. I wish we had more people from the labor, uh, from labor representing these boards. The way we look at our, our consistency of our boards right now, I don't think we have any people representing labor, and labor is part of our community, and so is business, and we need to integrate these two groups together to reach a common consensus and better for the community, so, uh, I don't look at this as one way or another. That's just my opinion at this particular time, thank you.
We have a motion on the table and a second, as I recall. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
I would say that the noes have it.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve her recommendation, or her, uh, appointment, Linda Catcher's.
We, we have them all, actually.
Oh, you do have them?
If there's no more, if there's no more concerns, then there's four of them that have been pulled off.
Then it would be, then it would be approving item F minus the appointment the mayor removed for the zoning appeals board of Shirley Carter.
Mayor Yanish?
Go ahead.
I, as long as we're having a discussion, I just have a question about, um, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority appointment. Um, they have been working hard, I think, on, uh, consolidation with the county, um, and I think the, the city has indicated they're in favor of that. I'm just wondering if your appointment is aware of that and is supportive of that merger that's, that's being proposed.
I believe this appointment was, uh, recommended by Mr. Car, uh, Mr. Christensen, and Mr. Christensen is not here this evening, but I do believe that she is aware of it, yes and no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, to go back to Shirley Carter, uh, you had presented her name, um, back on January 10th, um, for the Economic Development Board. Now, you come back and, uh, we're going to put her on the zoning appeals board, now you've removed her from that consideration. I know, um, as Councilmember Amon states, uh, we need a good mix of people on our boards, um, of all types, uh, types of people, uh, to serve on these boards. I know you and I had a discussion, uh, shortly after the January 10th council meeting, and I asked you your reasonings for removing her name from consideration to the Economic Development Board. Your comments at that time were that, uh, she was probably too liberal to be on that commission.
I don't recall that.
We did have that discussion, Mr. Mayor, and I guess, you know, I know there's been a lot of, uh, things not recalled, uh, by various people at the table here, but that was, that's our recommendation of that, and I hope you do, um, find a board or a place for her.
She is a smart lady and, uh...
In one of the boards or commissions, uh, so...
I would be her choice, you know, which way she would want to go or which committee she would want to go on, but, uh, I feel we're making the best choice possible for the, uh, uh, committee that Linda Catcher is going to be on.
Uh, I thought we had already discussed that, and it's been beside, and, um, we're talking about Shirley Carter, not Linda Thatcher.
Councilman?
I need a clarification on how this motion is, because I don't think I like what I'm hearing. If I understood what you said, we would be voting on all of F when I specifically pulled the one person. Why wouldn't that person be voted on separately?
You can make any motion that you feel appropriate. If you want to take four motions to get four people appointed, that is certainly an option.
Well, I don't necessarily, but I think the one that's pulled should have a separate vote, the other, the others certainly can go through as, as a block, but I specifically pulled one.
Correct. That can be done.
Okay. I didn't make the motion, so we need to get this...
And I'm not sure what the motion was, and I don't believe there was a second, but...
I believe I made a motion to, to make the recommendations that are on our agenda, the people that are on the board or...
There wasn't a second.
And you seconded?
No, I did not second it.
Do we have a second? Excuse me, could you repeat the motion, please, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, the motion at this point is to approve the mayoral appointments of Linda Catcher, Andrew Beer, Karen Nelson, and Aaron Larson to the respective boards as listed.
I'll second that. A motion has been made and seconded to appoint everyone, with the exception of Shirley Carter, to the zoning appeals board, um, and the other people would be appointed to their prospective appointments. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment to that. I'd like to amend that motion to exclude the appointment of Linda Catcher to the Economic Development Board.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to exclude Linda Catcher from the, uh, appointment of, uh, to the Economic Development Board. And that was the amended...
Motion? That's just the amendment, so you'll have to vote on the amendment first.
So, we are voting on the amendment which excludes Linda Catcher from the, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, just a comment on that. All the years I've been in the council, I, I've never seen this happening before. The, the, the mayor's, one of his biggest priorities or duties is to get people, uh, to serve on the boards and commissions. This is highly unusual, so therefore, I'm going to go back to my previous statement, this sounds political. I don't like it. Just let the person be on the board. If they're willing to volunteer, let them volunteer. I don't think one person is going to make any kind of huge damage to the board. If they have an interest to the community at heart, let them be on the board, and if that's the mayor's recommendation, unless you can prove that she's going to do some kind of damage, let the person serve.
Kevin, I've forgotten where we are.
We have a main motion by Councilmember Amon to approve four members, as you listed them, in item F. The amending motion with a second is to exclude the appointment of Linda Catcher to the Economic Development Board, and if that goes through, you're voting on the other three at this point. And there's a second.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to respond to Mr. Amon's comment about being political, because I believe, um, Shirley Carter was told that you were approving her appointment. Um, you called her the afternoon of the city council meeting and said that it wasn't, you, it, you were pulling that appointment. So if, if we want to talk politics, that probably does exist here, so I think the concern, to me, would be to get the best person on that board, and, and I guess I have a question. I spoke with you and asked you to reconsider Shirley Carter's appointment. Um, I think the medical community is, is a big part of this commune, and, community, it's a focus for the Economic Development Commission. She would have been an excellent person on that board. She has an interest in it, she brings a wealth of knowledge, um, with that, and so I think maybe there are politics going on here, more than just, um, pulling names here, so I would express a concern about that and, and think that the council does have the right to make a decision on the mayor's appointments, and I think that's what we're trying to do now,
Good. I'll make one more comment, and then we can, we can move on, but this is absolutely not political in my mind. This is just a, something that doesn't seem right, and the other thing that, that's unique about the appointments to the Economic Development Commission is the mayor's appointment goes to the Joint Powers Board of the Economic Development Commission and is approved there. So this is a recommendation to the EDC.
Councilman Fagerly?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Since we're on appointments, we had somewhat of a discussion if employees of the hospital, Rice Care, and Home Medical are part of the city or are they separate, and I'd like to be, have clarification on that. Are they paid by Rice Hospital? Are they employees of the city under an umbrella?
I believe in this case, it's the Rice Health Foundation, and that is a separate nonprofit, that is not attached, I mean, that is a private nonprofit.
Okay.
That means, so it's different than a municipal utility employee or a Rice Hospital employee.
What about Rice Care and Home Medical?
Employees?
I think it's the same.
The same.
Well, how come they merge all those properties together and pay taxes and lieu taxes to the city? They consider themselves part of the city.
I think we'd have to look, I mean, the city attorney may have to research that. The previous city attorney, um, ruled that Rice Care Center and Rice Home Medical was separate. I mean, we, you may ask the city attorney to look at it, but I think the Rice Health Foundation, um, is a private nonprofit. I think that was when, um, when the hospital looked at the, when we looked at the chamber issue, perhaps.
Yeah, Councilmember Fagerly, this is a, it's not quite as black and white as they're part of the city or they're not. The commissions themselves, they're obviously created by the city charter. They do exist on their own as separate entities to some extent, although there are certainly ties between the two organizations. With respect to the, um, Rice Care Center or Rice Home Medical, my understanding is those are separate nonprofit corporations. They were formed either in part or in whole by the Rice Hospital, but looking at it legally, they are legally separate entities. Certainly they're...
But the hospital board controls what they do, don't they?
I believe that the hospital board has a controlling stake in those companies. I think that's correct.
Jeez. All right. Thank you.
Does it make any difference, councilman, uh, or councillor, how, uh, how they're paid or who pays them?
Um, Mr. Mayor, to the, I'm trying to bring this back to, I think, what you're talking about, which is, is it okay to appoint members of those commissions or entities created by those commissions to city boards and commissions? It really is a case-by-case analysis to see if the, the two positions are incompatible. In, in general, there's no reason that they couldn't, but it's not to say that in any specific circumstance, it, it wouldn't be, it would be a problem. Thank you. But...
So where are we at?
It's time to vote on the amending motion to move the appointment of Economic Development Board Linda Catcher off of the original main motion.
And that would be just a motion?
Standard motion.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
No. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Docan?
No.
Fagerly?
No.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Three ayes, four nays, motion is defeated. The original motion must be acted on, Mr. Mayor, which is all four appointments.
Okay, we are, uh, voting on all four appointments. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no?
No.
Okay, we are scheduled hearings. I will open the hearing for the former Highway 40. Bruce, did you want to speak about that, please?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the matter before the council tonight is the consideration of a proposal to vacate a portion of former Highway 40, now known as Industrial Drive. It's the portion from its intersection with New Wilmer Avenue west to the holding property, which is the house on the corner of Highway 40 and County Road 5. The vacation is something that's been anticipated for a long time. It's the reason that we went ahead and rerouted Wilmer Avenue through the industrial park, uh, with the idea that the Wilmer Avenue relocation would better serve the entire property. There is an expansion project being planned that, uh, would impact a portion of this right-of-way, as the industry that's looking to expand would require a portion of the former right-of-way for its access road to the plant. The property that's being proposed for vacation, if we could go to the next slide, please? Yeah, you'll see the, uh, larger portion that's north of the, uh, dark line that's called Outlet B. That is part of the industrial park, third edition plat, and that right-of-way will revert back to the city of Wilmer. The property that is south of that line, that's shown as 2.09 acres, will revert back to the property owner to the south, and that's the property that the right-of-way was originally taken from. So at this point, uh, there is no conveyance of property, there's no transfer of property, they're simply vacating the right-of-way that exists. Staff would recommend the vacation proceed as proposed, and there are conditions in the resolution to vacate that, um, tie it to the need for a replacement easement for utilities through that old right-of-way. If they're ever, if they ever need to be relocated, there will need to be a replacement, uh, easement, and also conditioned upon the completion of Wilmer Avenue, uh, before any work would be done to eliminate the existing roadway that falls within that portion of the right-of-way. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience before I close the public Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open, uh, for discussion with, within the council.
Mr. Mayor? I make a motion to approve the vacation?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the vacation of County 40. All those in favor say aye? Or is that a resolution?
It's a resolution.
Resolution. Should have some discussion.
Let's have a discussion about that. Is there a discussion? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, is that, um, your reference to the utilities now, those all, that easement still exists, um, after the road vacation?
Absolutely. It would be a requirement, um, that prior to the recording of the vacation resolution, that there'd be an easement in place to, uh, that would be in favor of the utilities that exist there today.
Thank you.
Um, I did have contact with the major utilities that are in that right-of-way, and, uh, they all agreed that the vacation was an acceptable thing to happen if their interests were protected, and this will secure their, uh, their interest through that
Any further discussion? Councilman Omen?
Well, um, I guess just for the public's knowledge, Bruce, and I talked, as you briefed us this afternoon, it was a good discussion. As far as the value of this land, um, for the Genio expansion, that's what this comes down to. How do you, how do you quantify that? I mean, right now, to vacate it means to abandon it or to leave it, means, um, we're just leaving it. Does that mean it has no value whatsoever?
The vacation means that, um, the portion of the property taken as right-of-way from each of the parcels that exist today would revert back to the former property owner. So this was property that was owned by the property owner to the south, and they had granted an easement to the state highway department. Now, that was turned back to the city of Wilmer a number of years ago as a local street, so that, um, the easement became in favor of the city. All the city is doing is saying, "We no longer need that for right-of-way," and so it will cease to be shown as right-of-way on the legal description for the property to the south. So there is no property changing hands. This property is already described in their legal description, but then it states, um, that there is an easement across that property for state highway purposes, or now city street purposes, so, um, the city has vacated numerous pieces of right-of-way over the year, and it has always reverted to the property owner, half going each direction. In this particular case, it's a little bit differently, or it's a little bit different simply because of the way the right-of-way was obtained and the dimensions of the right-of-way that was originally obtained. So you look on that map, and there's quite a bit more that reverts back to the city than reverts back to Genio Turkey Store with their property. And this does not convey any interest of any city property to Genio Turkey Store. It simply eliminates, uh, the easement right across their property.
Thank you, Bruce, and that means, and as this progress continues with the development of Genio Turkey Store, which I support, um, that's all part of the process of sitting down and discussing value and, and current, uh, values of, of land for either party.
This vacation has nothing to do with the value of the property. If there is any conveyance of property in the future...
Right.
That's the point at which the value question will be addressed.
And, and that's when, it will probably be addressed, and let's hope it's going to be addressed as far as the, the, they're developing, uh, that property.
It absolutely has to be the, the city needs to recognize the val-... The city needs to recognize the value of any property that's being conveyed.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilman Tabliek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we vacate, or if we go ahead with the vacation, that means the road bed will be removed, traffic will no longer flow on that section of roadway. Highway 40 comes up from the west, and that will be a T-intersection. Either, you're going to either have to make a right or a left if you come into Wilmer on Highway 40, and I believe that's where Highway 40 ends at, correct?
That is correct.
We, have you looked at traffic control, what happens at that intersection when that becomes a T? As far as, you're going to remain with just a single stop sign or any other type of options? Well, are...
Well, I think there are a variety of options, and as we discussed briefly in committee, that concern was brought to the committee, and staff will address that with DOT and the county to find out if there are warrants for any additional signalization at that intersection or if there are not. I mean, we need to know what the ADTs are so we can, and look at forecasts to see what the possible options are for traffic control at that intersection.
Okay, as long as that gets looked at and by a traffic engineer, so that...
That's what I intend to do, obviously, depending on the action of the council.
Any further comments or questions? This is a resolution, and we would, okay, resolution, a vote.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Bruce, would you like to, as long as you're here, explain to us the, I'll open the hearing for the second one, and that is to allow Brewer taprooms as a permitted use in the central and general business districts.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. Recently, the council adopted a new section of the municipal code that allows Brewer taprooms. In order to make that a reality someday, the planning commission moved forward with and initiated a zoning ordinance text amendment that would allow those types of taprooms, both in the general business district and in the central business district. Staff would recommend that that ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Is there any comments from the audience before I close the public hearing? I will close the public hearing, hearing none, and open it up for questions from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish.
Second.
The motion has been made to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Halliday.
Fagerly.
I was in Granite Falls last week. There's a group of 10 people that have formed a co-op. They're looking at a building, and they want to do the same thing downtown Granite, so that must be the thing of the future.
Beer's popular.
For those of us that don't know what a taproom is, could you explain it to us, please?
A taproom is simply an area associated usually with a microbrewery where patrons can come in and sample the wares. They can purchase the wares, and they're limited to what they can purchase. The maximum amount of product I believe they can take off premise from a taproom is a growler, and I believe that's 64 ounces. Is that correct, Mr. Halliday? You would know.
I'm not sure if one is the limit, but a growler is 64 ounces.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? A roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move into the mayor's State of the City address, and I would like to start by saying good evening to the council members, the city staff, and all the citizens of Wilmer. Our population and labor force are growing at a rapid pace, and I would just like to reiterate some of the positive things happening in our city. And before I go too far, I would like to say that we will be open for questions afterwards. So if there are any questions or comments, please keep them in mind. We have significant, we had significant 2013 projects in Wilmer. Wilmer Overhead Door, the Candy Mall tenant spaces, construction built the YMCA. Somerset Waters Edge and Eagle Ridge Apartments are undergoing major refurbishment. Walmart has done a major refurbishment. Mills Auto Center has put up a huge warehouse, and I would like to have you take a look at that sometime. Ferguson Properties at the Holiday Inn have done an $11 million expansion, including two restaurants, as I understand. Heartland Orthopedics, Casey's is building another store. Stacy's Nursery has put up a new greenhouse, and Compassionate Care has done addition to their store, to their place of business. January through November of 2013, total construction totaled $48.7 million compared with 2012, with $17.1 million for the whole year. Upcoming projects, of which I cannot divulge information on what's happening with those, but to let you know what is happening is several large retail and industrial businesses are thinking about coming to town. There's a restaurant, mall expansion, Midwest Technologies has new tenants in mind, as well as a possible charter school. And the Rice Care Center has, you should take a look at this, by the way, the Rice Care Center is really neat. They have one portion done, and they're going to do another portion, as I understand it. And MinDOT has an expansion that is huge, and there are others, and we cannot forget the overlay project on East Highway 12 and the L.A. Can Drive project. Retail sales are estimated in Wilmer to be $650 million. The unemployment rate is under 4%. The labor force is more than our population, 25,000 in our labor force in October of 2013, but our population in 2013 was about 20,000, a little over 20,000. So we're growing very well that way, and also, we're getting a number of people from outside in our bedroom communities that are coming to our town. Median family income was up $1,000 in, from 2010, and we are now ranked 30th in that area out of 87 counties. I feel we have accomplished many things. Two of the three quiet zones are completed, and the airport land issues are mostly resolved and moving forward. As always, I will be upfront and candid with you, things have not always gone smoothly, and it's no secret that we have some struggles. I promised you transparency, and that is what I have tried to give you, and it is my intention to work hard to get everyone back on the same page and to do what is best for our city. Our charter establishes a strong city council, a weak mayor, and a city administration that has no discretionary authority other than what has been articulated to them by the city council. Simple, yes, but every element of our governing misses out and doesn't follow these simple precepts, and of course, this is the result of some of the problems we are experiencing at this time. We have non-elected people trying to run the city without the information that the council has. My role of representing the city doesn't, does not, by charter, include management authority. However, my oversight and budget-setting responsibility raises a need for me to speak out about this. I have found that unfortunately, the past mindset of some council members, local critics, and the local newspaper have discouraged discussions of issues in council, particularly with those with alternative options. It seems that in the past, things appear to have been worked out prior to the meetings instead of in the public eye, and I feel it is in the best interest of our taxpayers to know how and why certain decisions are made and how their tax dollars are being spent. The council needs to be more involved with what is going on in our community. Administration has not always been as open as needed. I want to encourage staff recommendations, but it is the council's responsibility to question those recommendations. Look for ways to lower costs and eliminate duplicate services. Our professionals are the most knowledgeable about where these opportunities exist. In summary, I would like to say that I intend to speak out more when I feel council needs to provide direction to administration and encourage involvement of both the council and me at earlier stages than it has been done in the past. Again, working together rather than as competitors will serve Wilmer much better and will benefit the taxpayers. Although we have some issues to work on, our city is in good hands. Thank you, and God bless. That's all I have. Are there any questions? Comments?
I have a question. Talking about the transparency issue, I, can you further exemplify what it is you're talking about? I go back to our budgetary discussion of last fall, and we had, I don't know, two or three work sessions that were televised for the public to see, and I think we're making an effort to be transparent. I don't feel that there's instances where there's some sort of backroom discussions on items and a decision is made before we meet, and I'd like you to clarify that just a little bit.
Well, I'd like to know what planet you're on, Dennis, because there is some things that are going on behind the scenes that I don't learn about until after the facts, you know, and so I mean that respectfully, you know? For you not to understand or to see that this is happening, I feel bad for you. I really do.
I don't. Because I don't think it's happening to that great an extent, and I'm sure that there are some things, but I think we so many times talk about not violating the open meeting law. That's our, that's our code, so we don't do that. I don't know if, I just don't see it that way.
And you're entitled to your opinion.
Yes, I am.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I can, comments I can agree with Councilmember Anderson. I don't see that we are doing things behind closed doors. I think everything's done out in the open. I guess, you know, for the mayor not to criticize the council member for him not knowing what's going on, I don't know if that's really, should be done here at this table, but I do have real high regards for the council and their ability to do things above the board in the public eye, and we're entirely cognizant of what, what open meeting and open meeting laws entail, so...
Go ahead. Are you finished? Are there any further discussions? I have the highest regards for this council myself, and I would like to say that openly and candidly, that I have high regards for this council. This council has been accused of being dysfunctional. This council is not dysfunctional. This is a good council. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Is there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go into the Wilmer Open Forum. Is there anybody's...
Yes, there is. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jerry Gesh was the first one that signed up.
Okay.
Jerry Gesh, 1200 Southeast Wilmer Avenue. Mr. Mayor, councilpersons. I want to talk about transparency, too. Last month I was here, and there was concerns about not knowing about Genio and bypass, unknowns, so to say. These things are your department heads and staff, things that they work with every day. Why not have the department heads and your staff have a monthly report? You know, simplifying this, you know more about it than I do in a way, but have a monthly report of what's accomplished by, in their departments, and the concerns that they have. So when you come out here, you've got a better understanding of what the, this transparency that you're talking about doesn't exist. Go out and see what, with these people, and see what their concerns are in the community. The county doesn't seem to have these problems. It's a different culture, but it's, I don't think it has to be things hidden. I don't think they really are. You have to look for them yourself also. You guys make the rules. If you feel that somebody's not getting the information to you, make sure that they do. And speaking of transparency, sometimes there's too much of it. When our citizens say, watching the city council sometimes is, I hate to say this, it hurts me, too. I'm a Wilmerite. I want to see this movie, this town continue moving on. But, you know, you hear everything, and this hurts. These are what people have heard, said. Sometimes you think it's a Keystone Cops, other times it's the gong show with no gong. You guys, think about what you're saying here. Your discussions should be professional and mature. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the schedule to speak?
No, sir.
Finance Committee report, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was a public comment, and there was no one there to comment. The next item was Rice Memorial Hospital. Bill Fenske, the CFO of Rice Hospital, presented to the committee the 2013 financial report for the hospital and various agencies, and it reflected a net operating loss of $2,870,499 as of December 31st. Inpatient volumes are stable, but the hospital continues to see lower outpatient volumes. Discussion included accounts receivable issues, the shift in payer mix to more governmental sources and less commercial sources, and efforts to recruit more specialized physicians for the hospital, particularly in the area of orthopedics. That was a long discussion, and we took all of that for information. The next item was Lakeland Drive Bike Path consultant and a budget. Staff explained to us that should the council wish to pursue the Lakeland Drive Bike Path project, 19 parcels of property need to be appraised to purchase easements to construct the designed bike path along the street. Noting the limited number of available appraisers in the area, a proposal was received from William Latham Real Estate Incorporated for these consultant services totaling $29,500. It is proposed that we will use local option sales tax funds to pay for this. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approve the consultant services contract for the Lakeland Drive Bike Path Project property appraisals with William Latham Real Estate, Inc. for $29,500.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution for the Lakeland, William Latham Real Estate Incorporated for $29,500 for the Lakeland Drive Bike Path project. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Could Bruce, could you explain a little more? What does that whole job consist of? You have some of it here, but how much land are you really looking at?
I think actually Mr. Halliday might be better able to answer that, so...
I'm not quite sure of the question, Councilmember Amen.
Well, as far as the 19 parcels proper needed to be appraised, how much land are we looking at? How many acres? Is there any...
Well, I don't think we have estimate of acres. Most of it is like five feet... Most of it is like five feet wide, maybe some places eight. It starts from Olina Avenue, just north of the YMCA, going northerly on the west side of Lakeland Drive, short of Trot Avenue, crosses the street and goes easterly all the way up to Civic Center Drive. Some places are as short as one foot, some is five feet of permanent easement, and then I take it for construction, there's some temporary easement that needs to be obtained also. So from the south end to the north end is 19 different property owners. Hopefully, we can have it appraised, make offers, and secure the easements without having any condemnation procedures.
Thank you, Kevin. In the past, on acquisition of parcels or easements, haven't we done that in-house or had our city attorney do that in the past? On street, or parts of street widening and acquisitions?
No, sir. State law makes us have a certified appraiser give us a value of the land. At this point, we don't know what five feet by 100-foot lot should have a value onto it because we have no in-house skill for that.
Okay. But the legal description and all that will be gone through our city attorney and approved prior to coming back to the council, correct?
Well, that goes through the surveyor who prepares all those that the appraiser has in his hand as he's making the appraisal. So those are being completed as we speak, I guess. And so I don't think the city attorney will have any review of a legal description that will be prepared by the surveyor, which has been chosen already.
And one final question. The $29,500, does that fall underneath the guidelines for public bids in this project? Or was this just chosen?
Professional services need not have a sealed bid.
Okay. Thank you. I have no problem. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Rule call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Then there's some further things on the Lakeland Drive Bike Path. Staff presented the preliminary Lakeland Drive Bike Path Project budget for easement acquisition to us, and that totaled $70,000. Of this amount, $29,500 is for the professional services that we just talked about, and the other $40,500 is the estimated cost of the easements required for constructing the bike path. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approve the preliminary Lakeland Drive Bike Path Project budget for easement acquisition in the amount of $70,000.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the preliminary Lakeland Drive Bike Path Project Budget for easement acquisition in the amount of $70,000. Is there any discussion on that? Rule call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Then we talked about the Robins Island Trail Project 1304 budget amendment. Staff presented the proposed revisions to the Robins Island Trail Project 1304 budget. The project budget has not been amended since before bids were taken and needs to be revised to reflect the actual costs. Bids came in considerably higher than anticipated, and the state of Minnesota has agreed to cover 80% of the bid costs for the project with federal grant dollars. Total construction costs are estimated at $260,000. The project bid was $251,986, but due to the additional... The addition and deletion of items in the project, there will be approximately $8,000 of additional costs that will need to be borne by the city. The local option sales tax funds will be used for the entire city portion with federal grants funding the remainder. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution to approve the amended Robins Island Trail Project 1304 budget as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Robins Island Trail Project 1304 budget as presented. Is there any discussion? Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Our next item has to do with the Public Works snow equipment. Staff presented a request to purchase two trucks with snow removal equipment to replace two of the current fleet. The two new trucks would be equipped with plows and dump bodies for a total cost of $333,568.48, which includes tax and license fees. There is a trade value of $49,000 that would be credited at the time of delivery. The capital improvement project for 2014 included $320,000 for both trucks. Hours and mileage on the old trucks was provided to the committee by Public Works Superintendent Letterbar. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to approve the purchase of the two Public Works trucks with snow equipment as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of two new Public Works trucks with snow equipment as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Next item was Public Works oil distributor equipment. Staff presented a request to purchase a trailer-mounted oil distributor used by Public Works for street patching. The existing equipment is in need of replacement and is being proposed that a 300-gallon trailer-mounted unit be purchased in the amount of $41,296 from Step Manufacturing. The 2014 capital improvement program included $187,427 to replace the existing 1,000-gallon truck-mounted unit. Public Works Superintendent Letterbar explained that the truck-mounted rig, they are required to drive to Chaska, Minnesota to pick up the product, which has a lengthy shelf life. With the trailer-mounted rig that's being proposed, the product can be obtained from the local MinDOT station, but the product has a shelf life of only a couple of weeks. Both products are equally effective in patching of the streets. The existing truck, which is 24 years old, will be disposed by selling on the state governmental website. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I'll move the recommendation to approve the purchase of the trailer-mounted oil distributor for $41,296 from Step Manufacturing.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the trailer-mounted oil distributor for $41,296 from Step Manufacturing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Our next item was some reports. We received the reports on the 1231 cash and investments portfolio, the third quarter investment activity, the 2013 interest and dividends by institution, 10-year investments history by quarter, 10-year interest and dividends history by quarter, December 2013 Rice Trust, and the 2013 Candy Ojai Area Transit. That was all for information only. There was no other business that came before the committee. I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee dated January 27, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. With that, we'll move into the Public Works report for January 28, 2014, and that would be Audrey, because Councilman Christensen is not here.
Yes.
You are the vice chair.
Yes. The Public Works Safety Committee was held on Tuesdays, January 28. Meeting was called to order. There were no public comments. The first item that we dealt with was the Sperryville Lift Station and an amendment to the Donahue Engineering Contract. Staff presented the amendment to the services for the Sperryville Lift Station. The original agreement had omitted some certain services for construction services, and it was determined that it was necessary to add those to see the project through to completion. A proposal was received from Donahue and Associates for an amendment in the agreement of the amount of $5,760. The new total of the Donahue and Associates agreement for Sperryville Lift Station project would be $58,469. Following discussion, there was a motion and a second and agreement to adopt the resolution to amend that service agreement in the amount of $5,760, resulting in the contract of $58,469. And I would enter that resolution. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to enter the resolution as presented, which was... Can you repeat the resolution?
We're adopting the resolution that amends the engineering service agreement for the Sperryville Lift Station project with Donahue and Associates.
And all those... Oh, this will be a rule call.
Yes, sir.
Rule call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
The next item was the Highway 12 project costs. Staff presented a summary of local costs for the 2014 Highway 12 projects as being designed and bid by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. The primary expenditures that require local participation are project mobilization, signal work at Highway 12, 7th Street Southwest intersection, and storm drainage work at the east end of the corridor that is being constructed as a maintenance project. The committee discussion focused on some of the questions on the 7th Street Highway 12 project, and I will ask Bruce Peterson if he can update us with the information that was requested at that time.
Councilmember Nelson, Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the biggest question that came up in the discussion dealt with the width of 7th Street. There was concern that 7th Street should be widened at the intersection to accommodate the right turning lane. If you will look at the drawing here, this is the turn lane as we see it right here, and as it turns on to 7th Street, right at the turn, 7th Street... I think my laser died. 7th Street does in fact get widened slightly to provide a wider turning radius for the traffic. This is a DOT project. This has gone through the DOT design process. 7th Street is a state aid route, municipal state aid route, and everything in the design is consistent with ASHTO standards as they apply to the DOT design and the US highway and its intersection design with a state aid route. Staff recommends that the council approve the project cost, participating in the project, and that comes in the amount of $58,747, and that those funds for that project come from a reallocation of capital improvement dollars, cost savings from the oil distributor trailer versus the truck purchase that was just approved.
I would enter a motion or a resolution. I'm not sure which we need here to approve the Highway 12 project costs. Second.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the Highway 12 project costs. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. The reallocation of funds is... I have no problem with the 7th Street or the right turn lane. I think that's great. But the reallocation of funds, the council may recall, or I have seen this happen in the past, when issues came up at the end of the year, close to the end of the year's budget where there's excess funds left over, they usually came back to the Finance Committee to make recommendations as to where the funds should be sent or given. Sometimes, I believe, we put it into the street improvement projects, but it's a good source of revenue to get it out of. But I guess in the future, if we're gonna... We talk about priorities in our long-range plan, and some of these are small steps that we need to accomplish and can accomplish. But I think when we come across extra funds like this, we have to look closely at just what our priorities are. I just wish we had those all in line right now so we could set aside funds for each and every one of those projects as situations like this come up. And I'll leave the comment at that. Thank you.
I'm reading here, if I may. Go ahead, Councilman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have to keep in mind that this is one of our gateways to our city and an important gateway to our cities. Is this going to accommodate getting people into the downtown area? Are we going to be able to get some signage up that will indicate as a gateway what's available in downtown Wilmer? This is, for me, this is really an important project, and again, it's a gateway to our city for downtown Wilmer.
This intersection is indeed one of our gateways. It's one of the three gateways that was evaluated by a consultant last year, and he brought back recommendations to the council for ways to identify it as a gateway to our central business district. This particular project here does a great deal in helping people get into our central business district as it eliminates a conflict between right-turning traffic and the through traffic on Highway 12. With regard to signage, there would not be any additional signage included with this project, but staff will continue to advocate for the gateway projects as we review our capital improvements program on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think this is a very important project and it's been something that's been in the works for a while as well. But I know the green space that is just outside the acquired right-of-way, that there's owned by business just to the south of there, and it is the intention of that business to maintain that as green space, or is that other uses for that?
To the best of my knowledge, Councilman, there is no plans by that property owner to develop that. I think they were looking at gaining the value from that site as far as being able to project their image on that site with the additional signage and the flags that were erected last year with the landscaping. So until I see something to the contrary, I don't know of any plans to develop that corner.
I know right now it looks very attractive for an entrance into the downtown, and I think this will only enhance it and improve it, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Well, just further comments. Thank you, Bruce, for bringing that back to the public's attention, that this was one of our commitments to the downtown plan with Wilmer Design Center when we had the community-wide meetings, and this is one step of many for the downtown that we need to consider. And also, I just want to make a public comment that the Petersons, from Peterson's Funeral Home, should be commended and appreciated by this community on their efforts to help us enhance that area and our neighborhood. Without them, it wouldn't have happened, and it would have been, probably at a great expense to the city. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Further comments? I'd like to read the last sentence in there that kind of takes me by surprise. "No action was taken pending review of plans at the city council meeting."
That's why I asked Mr. Peterson to do the presentation, because we were waiting to see the drawings at the time. So we did that, and that's why I made the motion afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, if I will, we will turn that into a resolution because it's a state of Minnesota project. I do want clarity, though. I have just to approve the highway project costs and nothing else about where the funds will come from. If you want that in the resolution, I would need clarity. Otherwise, we'll move that out to the Finance Committee for their next agenda.
I think that was in the motion. I'm fine with that. I think there was a breakout of actually what costs were at 7th and Litchfield and also what was on the east end, so maybe that should be added as documentation to this too, so in that resolution.
But are you saying you're taking it away from the Capital Outlay Project that was...
That was the recommendation of staff, so yes.
And that is in your resolution?
Yes.
Okay. That's the clarity we needed.
Would you read back the resolution to us?
Well, yeah, sure. It's invisible right now, Mr. Mayor.
Pressure's on.
It is a motion to approve the Highway 12 project costs, which were listed at $58,000, and to use that... fifty-eight thousand, and to use that money from the savings of the equipment that was just purchased, that was about a hundred thousand dollar savings. We'll...we'll detail that later from the truck tiring equipment.
Did you have a comment, councilman?
No, yeah, I did. It's just that these plans and specifications were drawn up by the Department of Transportation. There's no approval that's required of us on the plans and specifications, only accepting them, or is that a...
Uh, we will prepare it in accordance to what the MINDOT will require, but it's probably...it's a requirement for local participation, so it's your authorization to participate in the project. We aren't going to be amending what we see on the...
Yeah, we're not...we're not the lead of the project.
Correct.
The state...the State Department of Transportation is leading the project.
It'll be designed and bid by MINDOT, and we must authorize their local participation.
Yeah, you are correct, councilmember. It is a state of Minnesota project, and this is only our local share in participation.
That...Mayor Yanish, that documentation was part of a...was part of the agenda from Public Works meeting, the breakout of the costs and that information?
So we have a resolution to vote on?
Yes, sir, we do.
So we will begin with...we will have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was for information only. The committee discussed briefly the archery range issues and expressed a desire to have a significant conversation regarding that. At the February eleventh meeting, information was presented by Councilmember DeBleek and was distributed to the mayor and council for review, and this information details a variety of possible range layouts or configurations. The next item is for information only. Under new business, the committee discussed the status of the two thousand and fourteen street project, and discussion took place in...to express a desire to find a...to identify a consistent future funding source for street projects. There was no other business that came before the committee, and I would make a motion to file a minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we go into the Labor Commission's...our Labor Relations Committee report for January twenty-ninth. Councilman Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Item number one on the agenda...or item number two was public comments. There were no...there were no public comments at that time. Item number three was the closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point oh three to discuss labor negotiation strategies. Motion was made and seconded to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point oh three to discuss labor negotiations...negotiation strategies. Motion was carried, and the meeting was closed at four forty-six. Labor attorney Frank Madden joined the closed session via conference call. Item number four, we reopened the meeting at six twelve P.M. and got back to our regular agenda. Item number five was the strategic planning. Due to the time and the...of the meeting, this item was table until a future meeting. Item number seven, new business. I asked if city staff were engaged in succession planning similar to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. And Ms. Stevens stated that the staff is working on this, though not as formally as Wilmer Municipal Utilities is, so we'll be getting reports that future...future dates and updates. I also suggested that city staff reach out to Jennie O. Turkey Store to determine if there...if there is a need and assistance in work recruitment. If we're going to be planning for such a major project as in our community, it's going to affect many different taxing entities and also have an impact on our community, and labor force is something that I think should be addressed, and if that's part of our committees or our city council's involvement, please let us know, but it was brought up for discussion. Other things Ms. Stevens stated the city would be filing a pay equity report, and from the analysis by Springstead, the city would appear to be in compliance, and that's a pay equity report that's required by state statutes, and we give them an update as far as to our compliance. And I believe Ms. Stevens stated that we're...we're...she feels very comfortable we're going to be meeting compliance in all matters. There being no further business meeting during that six seventeen, and I will move to file a minutes. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for January twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Community Development Committee report for January thirtieth. Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meeting was called order at four forty-five. First item was public comments. Paula and Brett Peterson, who farm South of Murdoch, and Highway Forty were present to ask for consideration to install traffic signals at Highway Forty, County Road Five intersection, also to look at future lights at intersection of Wilmer...the new Wilmer Avenue and County Road Five. The committee stated that it'd be up to the state of Minnesota, MINDOT, to do warrants and traffic counts, and staff will be in contact with MINDOT for discussion on that. Item number three was the UMAC building declaration as unsafe building. This is the former Erickson's Building in downtown Wilmer. The building has deteriorated over the years to a point where there are a number of conditions that warrant an unsafe building declaration. Photographs of the exterior were provided to the committee. The owner has up and left and went to Las Vegas. There hasn't been any contact with him. We did receive an email this morning, or this afternoon at four thirty from...is it Mr. Hoffman? I don't know if you'd like to comment on that, Bruce?
Member Fagerly, Mayor Yanish, members of the council, yes, staff did send a letter to the owners of the UMAC building in December. That letter came back several weeks later as unclaimed. It did go certified mail. Because of the failure on the part of the property owner to respond, we took the next step of moving it to the Committee for Action, which is where we're at now. At the last minute this afternoon, a representative for the property did send an email in which he claimed that he was not contacted and...or that he was unable to sign for mail. Apparently, they only have one person out there that gets mail, and so where we're at now is he does not want the city to move forward with a declaration and has indicated that they might be willing to discuss it and to make some improvements to the building. I think history would tell us where this takes us. We look at the John Supper Club Building as a perfect example of a building that's never gotten completed, and quite frankly, we have no authority any longer to get it completed. I'm still very concerned about the unsafe conditions that exist at this property, but would not be adverse to trying to open up some conversation with this individual and to see how responsive they would be in mitigating some of those safety hazards.
So were they actually...did they get a letter or just phone call from the realtor?
A letter was sent that they did not sign for or acknowledge. Their realtor notified them. He apparently reads the West Central Tribune and called them after he saw the article about the committee meeting last week, so that's how it got to them. I have the name of the...one of the principals in Taiwan that I could contact as well and bring her into the conversation, probably with more success than dealing with the people that were in the building and represented it locally.
Okay. Well, the biggest question was if the city demolishes the structure, how the city would be reimbursed. Available options at this time are to file a lien or to place it on the real estate taxes as a special assessment. Situation may be somewhat different if there is a mortgage on the property. Staff said they would try to determine if there is a mortgage on the property and contact the mortgage holder. The committee did not want to delay action due to the unsafe conditions at the rear of the building. Motion was made and seconded that the council issue an unsafe building declaration and take the necessary steps to have the conditions corrected or the building be demolished. I'll move the recommendation of the committee.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to staff recommendations to demolish the building?
No, to call it unsafe.
To call it unsafe.
Have to take them to court.
Okay. Yeah, is there any discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. If we do that, does that preclude us from having discussions with these people? I mean, once we make this...this declaration, then all talk is done?
The way I would interpret a declaration, the way it's written, it would be to have the conditions corrected or the building demolished. If they are truly interested in coming to the table and correcting the conditions that warrant the declaration, staff will work with the property owner and see that the property is brought up to the proper standards. You know, at that point, once they eliminate the safety hazards, the city's authority in this matter pretty much dissipates, and we are dealing with an empty building that they have for sale.
I just don't want to see this drag on. You know, you referenced a problem we had once before where these things just dragged on and on and on. Should we put some sort of a date in here, amend it and put a date in there or anything, or will you come back to us if you're having a problem?
The answer to both of those questions would be yes, though we don't really need to state a date. I believe the statute authorizes the city to simply impose a thirty-day correction time limit on them, so my intention, if the declaration is made, would be to contact the individual in Vegas that now represents the property as well as his superior in Taiwan and let them know that we're very serious about getting these issues corrected. I will contact them with a joint email so that we maintain a very clean trail of discussion and move to have the building either brought up to code or let them know that if they can't do it within thirty days, we have a declaration, and at that point, I believe we could take that declaration to court and get an order.
Okay. That works for me.
I might just point out that I too received that email, and the email, I think, said, as I recall, that the person was here in this town during that time that it was sent out to Las Vegas. Am I right with that?
That's what his email stated. I can't verify his whereabouts.
Okay. But so what should we as a council do? Shall we table it?
There's a...there's a motion on...there is a motion on the floor right now to declare it an unsafe building. There's a motion and a second.
I'd proceed with it, and hopefully you'll know by next Thursday if you've made contact with them, and if they're actually here and do anything, then we can work with them.
Yeah, I will send an email out probably tomorrow to both...both the individuals and let them know what is required of them. I may have to wait until next week to get to specifics with them because our building official is gone, and he's going to have to review with me exactly what the deficiencies are and what will need to be done to correct them. He's at training for a couple of days now, and I'm going to be gone the end of the week, so staff will be on it in a timely manner.
But we should be able to know by the thirteenth, our next committee meeting.
I would certainly hope so.
Kevin, would you read the motion that's on the table for us?
It's a motion and a second for the council issue an unsafe building declaration and take the necessary steps to have the conditions corrected or the building demolished.
And that would be a resolution or a motion?
Standard motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number four was consideration of fee adjustments. Staff presented proposals to increase fees for planning and zoning activities as well as for rental housing program. Planning and zoning fees have not been increased in five years, and the rental housing program fees have not been adjusted since the inception of the program. Primary adjustments proposed to the planning and zoning fees were fifty dollars across the board increase in application fees for matters that go before the Planning Commission. These would include conditional use permits, plant...plats, rezoning, and variances that go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Also proposed were a fifty-dollar charge to write a zoning letter for mortgage companies, appraisers, and a hundred-dollar charge for formal plan review before the Planning Commission as well as small charges to sign permit fees. Staff proposed that applicants for action by the commission also provide seven hundred dollars in escrow to be used for special studies or review in the course of consideration of land use matters. The committee did not support that idea. In the rental program, the primary change being recommended by the staff was to increase the registration fee. It is currently twenty-five dollars per building and five dollars per unit. Staff was recommending an increase to fifty dollars per building and ten dollars per unit. This is...this would result in a twenty-five-dollar increase in registration fees for a single-family home, which would cover a two-year period. Registration period for other types of structures ranges from two to four years, so then increase fees would be able to be spread over a number of years and across a number of units. The committee recognized that a fee structure that would support one hundred percent of the cost of the rental inspection program was not feasible, but did believe that there were some increases warranted. Other changes proposed of the program were slight increases in fines and penalties. A motion was made and seconded to adjust the planning and zoning fees as proposed without the escrow fee requirement, and that an ordinance be introduced for hearing on March third, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
A motion was made and seconded to adjust the planning and zoning fees as proposed without the escrow fee requirement, and that an ordinance be introduced for a hearing on March third, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any discussion on that? And that would be a roll call?
No, sir. Standard motion to call a hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Then there was a motion made and passed that the rental housing program fees be adjusted as proposed with an ordinance introduced for hearing on March third, two thousand and fourteen also. I'll introduce that.
Second.
A motion was made and seconded and passed that the rental housing program fees be adjusted as proposed with an ordinance introduced for a hearing on March third, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
And then item five was the Jennie O. Turkey Store project anticipated timeline. Staff presented a proposal...or proposed timeline for the Jennie O. Turkey Store project. The timeline shows approximately six months to get through the procedures necessary to vacate the right-of-way, convey property, structure any public financing package, review plans, and issue permits for construction. The committee briefly discussed how the process might be kept more open and with information available to the public. Staff informed the committee that every step of the process that required city action would be conducted either at the committee level or the full council, and would in... would be conducted either at the committee level or the full council, and would include public hearings for the street vacation, any conveyance of real estate, and for any public financing or incentives provided in the course of the project, and this was for information only. Item six was old business, there was no old business. Item seven was new business, there was no new business, so if there's no questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for January 30, 2014, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we have the consideration of a day, a state one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license application, Kevin, would you like to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, you have the statewide Ducks Unlimited Conference coming to the Holiday Inn and Conference Center, February 13 through 16. They also are, the state Ducks Unlimited non-for-profit corporation is having a vendor and hospitality room near the pool, and as a nonprofit, they are eligible to have a temporary liquor license, and they've made application to have that one-to-four-day on-sale liquor license to distribute alcohol and control their own little hospitality event. They have supplied the necessary paperwork and certificate of insurance, and it's staff's recommendation to approve their one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license application.
Move to approve. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the one-to-four-day state liquor license application, and we'll do a roll call on that.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Consideration of the preliminary plat that has a nursing home third edition, Bruce, would you like to speak to us about that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the Planning Commission recently considered a preliminary plat filed by Bethesda. Bethesda on Wilmer Avenue is proposing to resubdivide their property into a two-lot plat to accommodate their future expansion plans, projects they hope to build and, beginning in 2014. The lot sizes and all frontages far exceed our zoning ordinance minimums, and the Planning Commission did approve the preliminary plat with a variety of conditions primarily involving easements, drainage, and access. It's a recommendation of staff that the council approved the preliminary plat so that Bethesda has future direction to pursue the final plat and to complete this project.
Move to approve. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat of the Bethesda Nursing Home.
Third edition. Third edition.
Third edition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we are going to reschedule the second meeting in February, the next meeting in February, due to the holiday, what is that, George Washington's birthday?
It's President's Day holiday.
President's Day.
We'd like to shift from Monday, February 17th, to Tuesday, February 18th.
So moved. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to move the second meeting in February, council meeting in February to, because of the President's Day holiday, from Monday to Tuesday, the 17th to the 18th, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Is there any old business that needs to be taken care of? Councilman DeBlique, were you on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We had received a letter, summary report from Mr. Carl Newe concerning our planning retreat that we held late last fall, just want to make sure that that letter gets added with our other planning documents, that, so it is part of the record for that meeting, for that retreat.
Thank you. I don't think we need a motion on that, Dooley?
No, sir.
I think we can add it without a motion.
It would be, staff should be able to do that.
Is there any new business, any further old business, by the way, first? Any new business? Councilman Amen.
Well, just one thing, Mr. Mayor, we have an opportunity tonight, we talked, we were at a meeting the other day, the Minnesota Preservation Alliance, and I see Bev Dougherty is here, and I'm just curious, is if you would be willing to speak regarding that, or are you going to come back at another time? There's some new news with the Wilmer Design Center and some approaches that they're coming up with on land acquisition, and I'm wondering if you want to share that with Bev now or wait till later? Come on in. Okay, I just didn't want to leave you out.
Thank you. Any further new business? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think we all got an email on Somerset Apartments.
Yes.
Southeast 18th Avenue, they're open house, February 14, 11 to noon, remember we gave, or HRA gave them conduit financing, so you should go look at the apartments.
If you have any opportunity, I would certainly recommend that, thank you, Rick. Councilman DeBlique?
Just follow up along that, maybe do a notice that council has been invited to that event, so we don't disrupt any public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? New business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Announcements?
Announcements?
Committee dates.
Oh, committee dates, I'm sorry, we do have to do the committee dates. Councilman Anderson?
The Finance Committee will meet Monday, February 10 at 4:45.
Public Works is planning to meet on February 11.
February 11.
I don't know if Mr. Christiansen is in town or not, but...
I'm not sure he's there.
Okay.
Was just planning to meet on February 11?
Yes, 4:45.
4:45. Councilman Amen, Labor?
Well, I was going to have the 11th, but we can move back to the 12th to keep working on the strategic plan for the city of Wilmer on the 12th, that'll be Thursday, if that's acceptable.
The 12th is Wednesday.
Or the, excuse me, the 13th. Correct?
I don't think there's, I think you can meet on Wednesday, the 12th, that would be the traditional, Public Works is meeting on Tuesday, the 11th, and I think Community Development is meeting on the...
Thursday, the 13th.
On the Thursday, the 13th, so...
You are on the 13th.
No, it would be February 12th, Wednesday, for Labor.
For Labor, yeah.
And there is, there is enough people to, okay, all right, that'll work. Thank you.
February 12th, Labor Committee meeting? And Councilman Fagerly?
February 13th, Thursday, 4:45, Community Development.
And with that, we will now adjourn. Go ahead.
Would like to remind you that the Wilmer Lakes Area 2040 Visioning and Planning meetings are going on, there's meetings scheduled from here on out, breaking into various committees and subcommittees, like most of those have been informed when they are, and I believe they are out on the, posted on the website, so...
They will be, they're not currently posted, but they will be soon.
And that website is WilmerLakesArea2040.com.
Thank you.
I know some of us attended the first go-around of those meetings, and I'd like to see that participation continue.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Move to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn, and a second, we are adjourned.